Morning, good evening everyone. We'll be getting started in about three minutes. We have a little bit of time.
Nithiji Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe, Surenthaji, how are you doing?
Thank you very much. I was attending that. Swamiji's. Mark from that.
Keynote, award ceremony, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it just finish or?
It's over, over, it's already over.
Okay, okay.
In time for this class, in time for this class.
Just in time yet.
Yeah.
The keynote session was also very nice, all souls are feminine, that is what he told in there.
Yeah, that's what we're going to discuss today as well, so. We'll discuss.
Yeah, actually. Yesterday, a day before yesterday, you were telling about the story of the Jaya Vijayana. They become Ravana. Actually, I was just going through the Ram Charitmanas, it was mentioned over there, the Pata Bhano, there was a king. He, he become the Ravana due to some shop.
No, this is, this comes from Bhagavatam, what I'm saying, so I don't know whose translation is it, is it Tulsi Dasji or?
Yes, yes Tulsi Das, Ram Charitmanas.
Did you take another part? But Jaya Vijay, it's pretty commonplace knowledge that. Ravan Kumkaran, Hrinyaksh, Ranyakashap, Shishupal and Dhankantar, these three avatars happened. Maybe you can give me some reference, I can check it out on that.
Okay, I will give the screenshot of that which was, I was reading.
Sure.
Tulsi Das Ram Charitmanas.
Yeah, sure, I can take a look at that.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe, thank you. We have one more minute, sixty more seconds before we start, so. Anybody who wants to. Come on video and talk about something, Radhe Radhe Kedarji, thank you, good to see you. Hope Denver weather is cooperating with you.
I was cold, so the big new.
We look forward to seeing you again during the family camp, it's coming very fast, June.
Yeah, I was just wondering, in fact, you know, we were attending this Sunday, the, our regular satsang, Swamiji satsang and. Family camp is because our kids are grown up and they are not with us, I mean, they are out of town and all that, so is it also for us, someone like?
Yeah, just, family camp is for the entire family. It's a beautiful time of the year, I mean, if you can make a trip, just like retreat and. It's a very immersive experience for, you know, four, five days, so do plan for it if you can.
Oh yeah, no, no, I have no problem, I'm.
It's not just for people with younger kids, it's for everyone, so I'm sure you could have a great time.
Okay, well, great, I appreciate the information, yes.
All right, good morning, good evening everyone. Hope you're having a great start to your day. Our audience cooperating, so that is good, I hope I don't have to hear the speaker and all that stuff, so let's get started. With today's topic of discussion, today we will talk. About today's Women's Day, so happy Women's Day to all of you. And we will pick up a relevant topic around that. So let's get started with our opening prayers. Guru Brahma, Guru Vishnu, Guru Deva. Deva. Shvarha. Guru Sansha. Aram. Asme. Sri. Guru Vedha. Yeh. Shukam Devam. Kama. Raja. Varpa. Eva Ki. Ma Vanam. Krishna. Vandey Jagat. Hey. Chir. Ah. Guru. Radhe Radhe, good morning, good evening again, everyone. So let's get started, so happy Women's Day, first of all to everyone. I'm glad I changed the stuff, in fact, the plan was to talk about Maya, the clutches of Maya, but then. Some last minute change, so thought let's talk about this topic, so. I got a few texts and they said, okay, we're doing anything for Women's Day, I said, all right, let's change the presentation for today. So look forward to an engaging discussion on this topic and I picked up some scriptural references including Bhagavad Gita on this. To keep our discussion focused, so let's get started, so happy Women's Day and this shloka is from. Manusriti. Manusriti says, yatra naryastu puujyante. Ramante tatra devata. Yatra tastu na puujyante. Sarvastra phala triya. So where women are honored. Divinity blossoms there. And where they are not honored, we'll look into that shloka as well, right, so the continuation of this shloka, it's very important shloka. Very relevant for the topic that we are going to discuss today and. Also, we are going to talk about. The, the different entities that God has and what is the relationship that gets, gets established. Between the energy and the energetic or energizer or the Shakti and the Shaktiman aspect of God. And. Other aspect, does soul have a gender? Yes or no, and if yes, what gender it is, we will have a bit of a discussion on it as well. So with that, let's get started. Like I said, this shloka is from Manusriti, so what this says is. That where women are honored, divinity blossoms there and wherever women are dishonored. All action, no matter how noble it may be, remains unfruitful. All the women, you can hang it on, at, you know, on your house doorboard and in your drying rooms. But don't just hang the shloka, put the translation as well, okay, because if somebody doesn't understand the translation, it not really help. And it is a very important shloka. In the sense, we'll see what is the context for, you know, through which it is coming from. Even in divine realm, the stature of Shakti is considered higher than the stature of Shaktiman. So, some people ask that, like Swamiji was saying in his lecture as well, why do you say Radhe Radhe, why not Krishna Krishna? So even in spirituality, in the, like I said, the stature of mother is accorded higher and we'll see how or why. Like I said, it's a very important shloka. Something that we can introduce to the kids as well and something to always refer to, to draw inspiration from it. Because our scriptures say, no matter how, how much noble deeds you do, but if women are not honored, it's a very powerful statement. Whatever you do remains unfruitful. So, one of the. Key yardsticks. Key yardsticks of. Success on the path of spirituality is developing that mindset, it's a very important one. I wish I was introduced to it early on, not that I've been disarming, but it's a very powerful thing, really have to think it in perspective. All right, now let's get started, I have picked up another shloka today and we'll connect the dots on this one as well. It is ten dot four one from Bhagavad Gita. We can pick up some participants who, who think they can recite it, so I'll recite it and then you're welcome to follow and then we'll get deeper into our discussion, philosophical discussion and more on the topic of. The Shakti, Shaktiman and the significance of women in the grand scheme of things. Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Tat Deva Vagachtwam. Mamate Jonsha Sambhavam. Okay, do we have any participants who?
Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe.
Give Professor Gubis today.
Sure.
Today, so all the women please, open the cameras and let's call it for you. Who do we have first, do we have somebody? Preeti, Preetiji Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe.
For the Women's Day wishes, sorry, I cannot switch on my camera today, but. For me a chance to recite this.
Sure, please go ahead.
Yeah. Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Tat Deva Vagachtwam. Mamate Jonsha Sambhavam.
Nice, Radhe Radhe, Preetiji, all right, let's take few more hands.
Rupa ji, Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe, Rizan. I don't know how would I can decide, but let me give it try, it seems to be difficult for me.
Boys, please go ahead.
Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Tat Eva Gachtwam. Mamate Jonsha Sambhavam.
Very nice, Rupa ji, if, if there were ever and any Olympics on trying, you would have won a gold medal for sure, so very nice. All right, do we have anybody else?
Maybe. Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe.
Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Deva Vagachtwam. Mamate Jonsha Sambhavam.
Very nice, Praghi ji, Radhe Radhe, thank you very much.
Mummy.
Radhe Radhe. It's all right, our little one also comes, he doesn't call me mommy, but he does from time to time, so that's all right.
Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Tat Deva Vagachtwam. Mamate Jonsha Sambhavam.
Very nice, Praghi ji, thank you very much, Radhe Radhe.
Suti ji, Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe, Suti.
Radhe Radhe, Radhe Radhe. Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Tat Eva Vagachtwam. Mamate Jonsha Sambhavam.
Very nice, Rizan, Radhe Radhe. Well, well.
Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe, Nita ji.
Radhe Radhe, I will try, it's very difficult for me, but I will try my best.
It will be fine.
Yad Yad Viputhi Satvam. Shri Madhurjita. Va Tatveda Gachcham Tum Mam. Te Jio Asambhavam. Radhe Radhe.
Tried Nita ji, Radhe Radhe, all right, do we have any more hands?
We have very more, Ria ji, Radhe Radhe.
Let's cover all the ladies today.
You have a few big hands also, Nithi bhai.
We can call for an answer, that's fine. Technically, there is no difference, so we will get into that concept as well, so let's continue.
Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Tat Eva Vagachtwam. Mamate Jonsha Sambhavam.
Wonderful, very nice, Ria ji, all right, we can pick up some men as well.
Surenthaji Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe, Surenthaji. We'll go for three, top three and then we will get started with that discussion.
Thank you for that. Picking up the mail.
Radhe Radhe Prabhu ji.
Radhe Radhe Prabhu.
Most wise of betting.
Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Deva Vagachtwam. Mamte Jio Shobhaavam.
Very nice, thank you, Surenthaji, all right, we can pick maybe couple more and then we'll get started.
Uday Kumar ji, Radhe Radhe.
Ya Radhe Radhe. Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Tat Eva Vagachtwam. Mamate Jonsha Sambhavam. Radhe Radhe.
Hi, Radhe Radhe.
Sam ji, Radhe Radhe. Nithi Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe.
Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Tat Eva Vagachtwam. Mamte Jio Na Sambhavam.
Radhe Radhe. Okay, thank you, Sam ji, I think two more hands are there, so we can really quickly. Cover both of them, Lakshmi ji and Ashutosh ji and those are the last two there, let's quickly.
Ria ji, Radhe Radhe.
Ria ji did that already, right?
Yeah.
Ria ji has already done that, I see Lakshmi ji and Ashutosh ji, two new hands, so let's quickly cover.
Radhe Radhe. Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe.
Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Tat Eva Gachtwam. Mamte Jonsha Sambhavam.
Wonderful, nice, Ashutosh ji, last one, Lakshmi ji, you are the lucky one.
Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe, everyone. Yad Yad Viputhi Mat Satvam. Shri Madhurjita Meva. Tat Tat Deva Vagachtwam. Mamate Jonsha Sambhavam.
Wonderful, very nice, thank you, so this shloka says, whatever you see as beautiful, glorious or powerful, Lord Krishna is saying. Know it to spring from but a spark of my splendor. So, today we are going to talk about women, we are going to talk about mother, we are going to talk about. The, the responsibility that women as mothers are, they are entrusted with bringing forth life and nurturing them and all the. Kind attributes that are associated with them. Which God has endowed them with in special measure, they emanate but from a spark of his splendor, that's what God is saying. So, the things that we associate mothers, women with, you know, the love, the empathy, the compassion, the forbearance, the tolerance. All those qualities, divine qualities, they actually emanate from God. And that is what we are going to have a bit of a discussion on today. So again, happy Women's Day, like spoke about and let's get into some deep philosophy now, you may have to tighten your seat belts. We'll get into some deeper philosophy around it. So. Lord Krishna is the father of the universe and. Radha is the divine mother. There's a reason why we, so like I said, in our scriptures. The stature of mother is higher than that of a father. And that is why we say Radhe Radhe, we go to the father through the channel of mother. Because. You know, mother is much more compassionate and like when we come from school, we know that. We generally tend to go to mother because mother is loving and father is not in a good mood, we know that. To mellow him down, mother will come in handy, so there's a reason for that, why that affection or that relation, building that relationship with mother is much more sweeter. Not to suggest fathers are any less sweeter, but. Just by being a mother, it naturally becomes more sweeter, so Radha is the divine mother. And scriptures say, pitoshat gunamata, vandaya, poojaya, garish, garyasi. Mother is far more venerable than the father, our scriptures say that. And she is directly involved in making the deepest sacrifices and mother's love is most pure and sublime in the material realm. There's nothing higher than that. All the relationships that we have, if there is any relationship that comes to perfection. When it comes to being selfless and pure, that is a mother-child relationship in the material realm, that is how powerful it is. And all the sacred qualities that such as love, compassion, tolerance, they manifest among this female species amongst human beings more. And God interests women to bring forth, forth life and nurture it as well. So even in spiritual realm, if you look at it, it is called Radhe Sham or Radhe Krishna. It is called Sita Ram or Si Ram. It is called Lakshmi Narayan, not Narayan Lakshmi, so. Female is accorded higher importance or higher stature, that name comes before. And like in the shloka, Lord is saying that know it as but a spark of my splendor only. Like we spoke about this concept, our divine father and mother are actually the same entity, it's when God assumes. It's like if we had an ability to distill our purest emotion, love and personified as a different person. Then that is who Radha is, we don't have that ability, God has that. To multiply the rest, he has that ability to do that, we don't have that ability, just think of it, there is a good part in us, there is a.
Number passing the Dhanavik.
On mute.
They don't even know anything.
We'll have to mute.
Correct.
You muted me as well, but that's, I've unmuted myself, all right, so what I'm saying is. We, we like being humans, we don't have that perfection, so there is a good part and there is a bit bad part in us. But let's say hypothetically, the good part, the purest part, we could distill, take out and personify it. If we had that ability, then that would be a very sweet, you know, personality, of course. God has that ability, so think of God's sweetest part, if he's able to do that and he's personified it, multiplied himself, doubled himself as Radha Tathu, as the divine mother, how sweet it will be. And that is why all the, the Shaktis are considered higher than the Shaktimans. Like Parvati Shiv relationship, Sita Ram relationship, Radha Krishna, Lakshmi Narayan, the Shakti is accorded a higher stature than that of the Shaktiman itself. So let's go, let's go into a little bit of a philosophy, so there are three eternal entities, the first one is the God himself, of course, as we know. Which is also called Brahmo. Brah is one who is great and who can make others great. The second one is Jeev, Jeev Shakti, the Tata Shakti, that is who we are. And the third one is the Maya, which is God's external or the inferior energy, so these are the three powers of God. So if you look at it within from a relationship standpoint. There is an energizer who provides energy and then remaining ones are the energy and by virtue of this relationship. The energetic and energy, the energizer and energy, so energy is subservient to the energetic. So, the energetic or the energizer is called is male and the energies are female. If you look at it, even Jeev from, for that matter, if you look at this relationship, the Shakti is the female aspect of it, the Shaktiman is the purush or the male aspect of it. And we are also part of his Jeev Shakti, so technically souls which are part of Jeev Shakti of God are females as well. That is a different matter that we get accorded a body in the material realm and within those bodies, if somebody comes in as a female, they have those liberal dose of all those virtues, you know, not that males don't have it. But females have, you know, some of those things that we spoke about, that compassion, love, forbearance, because. They are specifically entrusted with the job of bringing forth life and nurturing them. And that is why that's special state, status, so the souls actually have no gender. But technically speaking, souls are female, there is only one purush here. Now, there's a story around it as well of Meera bhai, during her time, she went to meet Jiva Goswami in Vrindavan. And when she went to meet him, it is said that. She, she's basically called over to that, I've come here to meet him and one of his disciples, he went to Jiva Goswami and said, somebody named Meera has come to meet you. And the, the moment when he came to know it is a female, he sent the message back, tell her that I'm a brahmachari, sanyasi, I don't meet females. And when she heard that, she said, who is, who's this another male who has come in Vrindavan? I just knew about one male, which is the Parampurish Krishna himself, so when he heard that response, he understood. That you know, what I spoke was talking on a bodily platform, here is somebody who's jyanta, to jyana is so solid, is actually telling what are two identities, so he said, okay, call, call her now. It's an interesting story, thought I'll call upon, call upon that as well, because when we spoke about soul, it doesn't have gender, technically we are all females, whether we like it or not. Now let's look at it from a sankhya darshan standpoint, analytical enumeration, I think it's going to drive home the point even more. Two aspects, one, the fact that we are. The everything other than Parampurish is actually female. And the second aspect, why we are bound in the system, so let's look at it, so the first entity is purush, the Parampurish itself, himself. Through, when Parampurish glances at Prakruti, which is the female. Comes the Mahantatu, through Mahantatu comes Ahmkar, the ego, self, the form that we identified with, that is where the Ahmkar comes. Through that, anyway, these three gudas are the driving forces and then come the next aspect, the mind. No, the first, the next aspect is actually the Panchatan matras and through Panchatan matras come the Panch bhoot, ether, fire, water, earth and through that. The Panch karma indriyas, jyani indriyas and the mind is formed, so there is a mapping between these, like if you look at ear, it is mapped to sound and sound is further mapped to ether. Skin related to touch, through skin we touch and then it is related to the air element. Eyes related to form, which is related to fire, water, earth and so on. However, the key concept here is the male, as per our scriptures, just by virtue of the hierarchy that you look into this chart, is the supreme enjoyer. Supreme enjoyer means just by being there and, and actually creating everything else or making, you know. Being the cause of unfolding of the remaining elements, he becomes the de facto enjoyer around it. And the female aspect is the Prakruti. Now enjoyer, who is the enjoyer, we have already seen the supreme enjoyer, the problem happens when the Jeev starts to enjoy the Prakruti, so Jeev has inserted itself as an enjoyer. And that is the reason why. It gets bound in it, so the constitutional position of Jeev is not that of an enjoyer, it's that of serving the purusha, because the Jeev's existence also is dependent upon purusha. And when Jeev starts to enjoy Prakruti, like we are doing, bhog, we want to enjoy everything around us, that is why we get bound in it and that is where this whole concept of serving. Selflessness, surrender, scriptures are telling us to, you know, reverse that cycle. Now, why do we do that, it's only because of Maya, we will get into that topic tomorrow, that's a much deeper topic to discuss about. Okay, we, we look at Maya, we see Maya and it's because of Maya, we actually do that, why God has made it so difficult for us, if that was the case, that is for tomorrow's discussion, but for today, let's understand. That Jeev has actually inserted itself in the hierarchy as an enjoyer, which is unnatural. And that is why this binding stuff or the repetition of eight point four million is happening. Okay, now if you look at this chart again. Prakruti is female, everything else is female, there is only one energetic, which is the Parampurish himself, everything else emanates from him. So just by the virtue of, it's like your energy will serve you, right, your hand, when you apply energy to it, it's actually serving you. So the energetic, the ener, energy automatically becomes the subservient to energy, the energy provider or the energetic. It cannot assume a role of a master there and that is, that is how the relationship gets established, so technically we all are females. Have, who have been endowed with male or female body from a material context, but as a soul at a level of soul, we are on females. Let's go a little further now, any questions on this before I get into a bit of a discussion on this topic? Any questions so far on what we have discussed?
Nobody reply.
Okay. All right, no worries. So, let's have a bit of a discussion before we go a little further, so. Are there any inherent advantages women have over men on the path of spirituality? It's a pretty interesting entry in question, really like to hear from participants to get that going, why or why not? Okay. It's an interesting topic, so let, let's hear and then we will proceed further.
Rupa ji, Radhe Radhe.
Ah, Radhe Radhe. Actually, Nithi ji, like you were saying that only the Parampurish has got the male soul, the rest are. Only the Parampurish has got the male soul, the rest are all female, right? So if at all, everyone is a female and when it entered in a male body. How can the thinking or the authority or the things change as per the male body?
Interesting question. So, yeah, it's, I don't know, in IT they say the method signature changes, right? The abstract class when it assumes some kind of a thing. So it's like this, I'll try to explain it to some kind of an analogy. See the vessel in which you get, you start getting those kind of things, right? You acquire those act because we have been. We have acquired male bodies and female bodies both over lifetimes. But the same drop, depending upon the vessel it falls, can assume different forms. For example, the drop. When it falls on a flower, the flower will bloom. When it falls on, let's say an oyster, it becomes a shell. So depending upon the vessel in which you go, you start assuming some different attributes. Possibly because of that it happens. You get those sanskaras because we are attuned to occupying both kind of bodies across lifetimes. If you look at some of the, you actually go divine, they, they actually get to that level where they can actually, you know. Get beyond this gender kind of a thing, when they get deeper into their bhaktis. But that, that is a pretty advanced level. But actually, you look at it, soul has no gender. You are, you might be male, but that doesn't mean you'll continue becoming male for the rest of your, you know, whatever birth you take or you're a female. That is how it's going to be. You can be given any kind of body depending upon the kind of lessons we need. That's how it goes. See, just by changing, which our mindset changes, right? Have you observed that sometimes? The kind of clothes you are wearing, the kind of mindset, it, it has a kind of a bearing. But here we are talking about our gross body. It changes our. Those sanskaras get triggered, the kind of body you are in.
The judge is saying it's like hardware, software.
Uh, yes, Radhe, Radhe. So my question is, you explained there are three. Uh, things like the Lord, which is the Purush and the second one is the Devatma and the third one is the energy. Right? So. I couldn't understand like.
This one, okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
So Lord is called Brahma. The others are its energies. The Jeev is called the Tata Shakti. And the Maya is called its external energy and Brahm also has an internal energy which is called a Sarupa Shakti. So energetic and remaining all are its energies. Sarupa Shakti is its internal. Maya is its external energy, Jeev is its borderline or Tata Shakti. All are its energies.
So we all fall into this Devatmas, right? So does that, i- is it like, like Devatmas are more, has, has more energy than the Maya?
No, it, we cannot say more or less energy, but Jeevatmas have an advantage in the sense that we are sentient. Sentient means. We are living. Maya is Jada Shakti. It is not Chetan. It is inert. For example. When somebody dies or somebody passes away. Right? The body is still there, eye is still there. Can I see? No. Eye on itself cannot see because. Eye is made up of Jada Shakti, the gross element, Panch Mahabhoot, Maya. But when the Jeeva Shakti enters the body, that's when the eye can see, the mind can work, the body can operate. So Jeeva Shakti is sentient, Chetan, in Hindi. And Maya Shakti is Jada or Incentient. There is a difference between these two.
Okay, thank you so much.
Kubarji, Radhe, Radhe.
Radhe, Radhe, Nithinji, Radhe, Radhe, everyone. I do not think there is any advantage, uh, women or men have over the other. Because each one is a soul, right? So you don't have a man's soul or a woman's soul. So I, I think it's all equal. So who is spiritually, who has a spiritual bent of mind is more spiritual and. On the path of spirituality.
Yeah, there are no right or wrong answers. I just wanted to have a discussion on their perspectives, so.
But I would be surprised if someone said it is true.
Let's hear that. I can see quite a few hands raised. So I'm sure that that will come out in some form or manner. So let's hear from other participants as well and then get, get a discussion going. Maybe some factual discussion around some of the aspects. Uh, and get that going. Let's, let's see, hear from others as well. Quite a few hands I see. Shangji.
I can't remember the name of the person who was asking this question. If I understand the question correctly, this will be my, my contemplation. As long as we are wearing that bodily lens. If, if, if a man looks at me and he's only looking at through the lens of the bodily language, right? This is a woman and in, in their head, I'm only defined by the physical characteristics. It's difficult to bridge that gap and perceive beyond that materialistic perception of the lens of. Woman has these characters. But if you are willing to wear that spiritual lens. I feel that we all have certain sense of responsibility that we bring to the table. Like a woman's responsibility, at least in whatever I was researching. I was researching Quran and everything. What is the purpose of. A marriage, what is the purpose of the kids? So it was bringing me back to. Your purpose in somebody else's life as a wife is to bring them close to spirituality. And the physical characteristics that the God has given us is to perform. Those four things that we are supposed to perform, whether it is Dharma, Artha, Kama or Moksha. How we do those duties is what makes it different. But I don't think there is advantage or disadvantage. But there is an innate nature of the self. Of how we are supposed to perform those duties. And that's where the bodily design comes into the picture. Um, we have a womb to carry the kids, but men don't. But there is a spiritual reason of why it is not like that. So it is neither higher or lower, but it is perfectly designed the way that it was supposed to be designed. To serve the purpose that was supposed to be serving. So in that, everybody has the same duties and responsibilities, you know. The, the Dharma part, the Artha part, the Kama part, the Moksha part. But these are prescribed duties, given that the bodily. Features are given by God to serve those duties. I don't think it is either at advantage or disadvantage. But we are prescribed and given the form that serves the purpose. That's how I see it. So. As long as we are wearing that materialistic lens of looking at a woman just, okay, these are the physical attributes. We will be, I feel like we will be caged in that, whether it's moral or cultural or the spiritual cage. That we put ourselves in, whether it's a man or woman, or we put the other person in that cage, whether it's the moral or the culture, the spiritual cage. That we built in our own heads.
Got it. So it's basically agnostic. That's yours, that's what he essentially is saying. Yeah, that makes sense because end of the day we are soul. Let me throw another dynamic to it. Before I throw that dynamic to the discussion, let's hear, I would like to hear from. Ragya, if you are around, let's hear from you, your perspective on that based on the philosophy.
Radhi, 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 Nitin and Shangji. Yes, I have some points to put. Can you please give me five minutes? I'm at a checkout counter in a grocery shop. Please call me. I'm just checking out.
Okay, we will not give you five minutes. We will give you two forty seconds. Okay, let's hear from.
Radhe, Radhe, Nithinji, Radhe, Radhe, Shangji, everyone. I think it's kind of a, a soul should, should be like neutral, right? Should not have like a male or female kind of thing because souls are souls, which are kind of neutral is what I felt. And also I'll take it back to little like Vedas, if we, when we talk about Vedas. So Vedas do not talk about male or female there. They only talk about Tatvam, Tatvam, I see, Tat, 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 right? So they never say. Uh, particular about a particular god or goddess, right? So I, I would like to just understand more about, when you compare with. Why, why do we say souls are female or, I, I'm trying to understand a little bit more, Nithinji.
Okay, souls are female, okay, that concept or, okay, let's continue. Please finish off your thought. We'll get into that.
So that's the basic question that I have. And when coming to your question. So what I would say is a physical like on the lighter side. So generally, girls or women are more obedient, more, more softer, more. Traditional, cultural than boys or men. So like, we have all the bad habits with the men compared to women. So that's kind of, I'm, I'm kind of going to physical world, the marriage middle world. Even in traditional also, in recent, like if you take our parents or grandparents and those parents. So more, girls are more obedient and more on the path of spiritualism. They do like, they do lot of ratas and pujas and all. Compared to men. That's what is the latest thing. But again, that may be very later.
Okay, let me throw a question now because you brought in that point. How many saints can you think of who are male and who are females in this human body? Okay. I'm talking about, everybody is a female by the way. How many female saints can you remember? Can you give me some numbers? Can, can somebody give me any names? Okay, I would like to know, who, who, give me at least few names of saints that you know, female saints. Anybody, you can please feel free to, Shangji, you can pick up any, I can see quite a few hands.
Meera Bai.
Meera Bai is one, yeah. Can, can somebody give me a second name?
Adapuraji. Ananda Mayma.
Atta Mahadevi, Atta Mahadevi.
Let me throw another dynamic to it, yes. Very true. So you've seen a lot of male saints were there as well, right? Lot of Jagat gurus and saints who have come, Chaturnayama Prabhu, more recently Kripaluchi Maharaj, Shankaracharya. So there's a note. So actually, Ram Krishnan Paramhans for that matter. So that women have more spirituality, that statistically we cannot really prove that, yes, they do have a. At least from a nature standpoint, if you look at it, as you say, we have to carry dualities in the sense that. What is required of us on the path of devotion and spirituality is that we need to be harder than a thunderbolt. When it comes to material world and softer than a butter, when it comes to the topics of God or thinking about God. So stone-hearted when it comes to the world and, and you know, soft-hearted when it comes to God. That duality has to be carried together. If you look at males, generally they are more stone-hearted than females. Again, I don't want to send the gap, the pigeons. Not necessarily, I know if you leave aside Shahrukh Khan and few other people. Amir Khan and few other people who can, who like to cry as well publicly, which is a great, it takes a lot of strength to do that. But generally it is considered, I'm not going to put stereotypes here, it is considered that people are good at managing their emotions or. Generally come across as strong people for whatever reason. They may not be, but they'll at least portray that. And females, they are more, more open to expressing their emotions. But the problems in both cases happen, then somebody who is strong becomes stone-hearted, even in the case of not so easy for them to shed tears for God. And then people who are emotional, they will shed tear for God and for world as well. So that duality becomes difficult to balance. Anyway, I've just threw that then dynamic to it to take the conversation forward. So any attributes that can actually be beneficial on this path that you inherently have. A little bit of an advantage over the other is what I wanted to have a discussion on. Let's hear from other participants to take this, this, maybe this, there's absolutely no advantage whatsoever.
We have few chats like, shall I read them? Parthaji is saying, why some are bodhisubhitt and some are subhitt. Please write it. Ragini is saying, Radhe, Radhe, the advantage, Ubaad are more passionate, loving, they play a role of Vatsale and Badri Bhav.
Yeah, so why some become men and women is like if you, if you troubled your wife, right? Next time, probably God swaps the role. I don't know. Maybe there is a method to this madness, based on the credit balance thing or based on the kind of lessons we need. Uh, but you just got to be careful, right? If you trouble or we have some predispositions. Maybe God will give us that body like I said, right? If you, if you, if you, if you become fanatic, let's say this life and you start hating. Uh, people of, from a certain religion, what is the guarantee God will not put you in that religion just so that you can learn your lessons? So we don't know. God only knows whom to put in which kind of a body. I wish I had that formula. Uh, but. God knows. Yes, Pragati, please go ahead.
Uh, Radhe, Radhe, Shangji and everyone. Yeah, even I had this riddle, ki soul itna powerful hai, how does it get mad when it acquires a human body? So you know, like reading and contemplating on it, it's like a drop of water. If it enters a green color, it becomes green. If it enters a red color, it becomes red. So soul jis body me jata hai, uske paas sanskaras affects its more than the female body or the male body. As we see, there are male also marching in this path, there are female also marching on this path. So yeah, maybe females are more troubled and they resort to God. And yeah, jokes apart, even Swamiji says that, yeah, women are naturally, you know, kind of little bit soft-hearted. Uh, men are more rational, more calculated. Sorry, sorry if I'm offending anyone.
No, it's not, we cannot stereotype it, but generally it is considered, it may be wrong.
Generally, generally, it's considered.
But when somebody is emotional, then they become emotional in every matter, right? Including God and then world as well. And if somebody is very, very rational, then they will apply their brains even in the matters of God. So that duality.
Yeah, like you said that, like we shed tears for God also, we shed tear in the world also for a child also. And you know, like husbands are relatively so cool, what are you crying for? Like when my daughter was going, I was crying and my husband said, okay, fine, she's going for high studies, why crying? So you know, as the soul acquires the traits of, as per their sanskaras and everyone marches. As per their sanskar or, you know, subject of grace opens. Uh, that is what my perception is. Uh, when we get, you know, in this riddle. Ki ye kaise hota hai? As far as I remember in Paramans, Yogananda's Bhagavad Gita, he had really praised, like, you know. Uh, this question is going to fire a lot of controversy, uh, that.
Let's make it controversial.
Higher birth, hey, manga. And those who march on this path is highly creditable. And that is what I remember, though I had read it long back, even before I started with Swamiji's Bhagavad Gita. So that is what I recall from his Bhagavad Gita, he had really.
So even if the kind of attire we wear has some kind of a bearing on our mindset, you would have wronged, right? So when I, when I go to temple in, in Kurta Pajama, I just get source sanskaras, you know. Very nice, that's why I'm Diwali and when you, and when you go in beer gogs and you get that your kind of a mindset. So. Even those small things can play on your mind. So why won't, when you are tired, get this entire body? Obviously those sanskaras become dominant. That's a, that's a great point, Prakati. And, and then we start playing to the teams of those sanskaras because we have in, aboarded both kind of bodies in multiple lifetimes. Great point, Pragati, very nice.
Maybe we have few chats later. Tejalji is saying, to develop the Gopi Bhav would be inherited to women.
Wonderful. So, it's a great point. Now she brought in the Gopi Bhav. Now think about the Rup Dhyan aspect of it. There is a natural advantage girls, women have when it comes to practicing Madhur Rehav. Because they are not at the platform of a soul yet, right? So thinking becomes a little difficult to begin with. As you progress, it will become easier. But that is where the Rup Dhyan is the pran of worship or meditation. And girls, women, they have an inherent advantage there. It's, see, it's easy for them to start practicing that. Even Maharaji says, Manna, you are males, but end of the day, you are all, you know, souls. So that is where I see a big advantage, big plus in the meditation aspect of it. Okay, let's hear.
So yeah, actually I was coming to this point only that. Uh, maybe there is this evidence. uh maybe there is this evidence that possibly at some point of time females may have had some advantage, which is like at least in the case, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the case of Krishna, I think the the people who were at the epic of their Bhakti Bhav were the Gopis and they were females. So maybe that's an evidence, but uh another point was uh that spiritually, as you said, we are all female souls. So it's just a match versus mismatch maybe a little bit, which is like, you know, for males, it's internally females and externally males. But that mismatch is mainly because of our conditioning, I would say. So if we get the proper knowledge uh about spiritual world, then I think these differences dissolve and then I don't think anyone is at an advantage or disadvantage.
Wonderful, Sandhya, I think you have internalized this knowledge and you proved it by wishing me Happy Women's Day. So thank you for that. So but yeah, great point. I think soul is doesn't have a gender, but yeah, there is, there is obviously a bit of an advantage when it comes to rupe dhan for sure, I would say. Uh and it's a, it's not a small advantage, trust me, it's a big advantage because if somebody can paripak or perfect rupe dhan. It's such a big deal, such a big deal, it's such a great, great asset to have under your belt. So great point, but thank you so much for that. Yes, let's hear from other part Spencer. So tomorrow we will discuss by the way Maya part of it, another question that comes that God has created this and tormenting us and making it difficult. Like I said, there are reasons why our mind keeps on getting scattered, very difficult to us for us to focus, so many distractions, so many propensities. Why Maya to begin with, right? Let there just be God. And it's like, you know, why did God started having expense at our fun, fun at our expense rather, I used to wonder that. We'll get into that topic tomorrow. So let's hear from couple of other participants, I think um quite a few had raised hands, so if you.
All I got down, it was by the sound, only two are left.
Okay, sure, let's hear.
Adapura G, Radhe Radhe.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, you you asked, I just I wanted to give the name of a other woman saint, Atta Mahadevi from South. You know, she was almost like, you know, Baran in a, you know, royal family, she gives up and goes after Malikarjuna. I think in Saurashta, you know, she goes after, she was her beloved and then you know uh uh she she is a saint, a known saint, like Mira Bye, almost. So I just wanted to say that name.
Sure, all right. Thanks for sharing that. I'll check it up, look it up. I I just knew two names, Mira Bye and Ananda Mima. So that's good to know. Thank you for sharing that, Adapura G. All right, yes.
Sadhgya says, but the but the Teresa is also there.
Teresa, yeah, I don't know. I mean, she was accorded sainthood uh later on, but I I wouldn't really know, so possibly yes.
Uh Kadishka G says, we are all in ignorance of considering ourselves as the body, as male or female, but this ignorance helps to love God as beloved. Whereas men have to practice a little hard to look God as their beloved, as they have to make their bhav de, Radhe Radhe.
Beautiful point, very true. I see Seema G saying Roger Federer cries, yeah, I know he cries as well. Radha is saint, Radha is the divine power of God, Radha is God himself, so is not Jeeva Atma. Who's realized saint, Radha is not a saint, Radha is God personally, God itself, God's female form. Yes, uh any new hands do we have or?
We have few more chats, shall we read them?
Yes, please, if there is anything we could discuss and we have time today.
This is sorry, sorry, please go ahead.
No, no, please go ahead and you have posted that in its tracker as well.
Yes, Rashvi G says, Badhuriya Bhav is more than females, this will pass all other parts of discussion.
Badhur Rebhav, yes, there is an edge for sure, like we discussed, uh females will have an edge on Madhur Rebhav, but there could be exception to use as well, lot of them. But yes, I I agree, I mean, it's easier for them to at least have a good head start on that.
Richard G says, yes, being of mother, being a mother, I feel that intensity of Bhakti. I see my daughter as Radha G, this is this I would have not been able to feel in any other way, Radha Radhe.
Great point. So Vatsale Bhav considering God as your son or daughter, yeah, that's a beautiful relation you can build actually, great way. Thank you for hearing that.
Sudhi G, Radha Radhe, please go ahead.
Radha Radha, Shyamji, yeah, actually, just you are telling us, being a female, we enjoy more have a love and we are more tolerance power. But uh that tolerance power is there for our kids, but when we are dealing with other person or why it goes away with the time or was we do feel that now I don't feel that tolerance, why that goes away? And second question like uh you are out are uh just to raise this question of why there are very few females are there? You know, my, I said told you my daughter went to Canada and you know, in India, I was telling her, let's go to temple, let's go to Gurduvara. And you know, there she is alone and she went to uh uh Gurduvara on Sunday. And she was sitting there and the person came and started preaching her a few things. And at the end of the session, she raised the same question as you you asked. So I will tell her a few names that you share right away.
Which question, which question?
There are very few female saints are there, teachers. That you raised, ask this question.
Question you are saying.
She, yeah, she didn't get that answer from that person uh in Venkuru.
There's no reason for that, maybe in our time horizon that we are looking at, possibly, but maybe in someone you'd have much more than that. There is no thumb rule as such which can say there there are more or less, I was just trying to counter the question that if that is the case, then we should have heard about more saints, right? But maybe in some other time, time era that we look at, there may be much more female ones, right? So there's not no who as such, that's that's all essentially what it is. Great points on each and I'm glad she's starting going to Gurduvara as well, the longer will keep her going, I'm very sure, okay. Very nice.
Radha Radhe.
Radha Radha, Shyamji, Radha Radha. Okay, uh so there is another female saint, her name is Giribala, Indian saint, Giribala.
Okay.
Uh it's mentioned in Paramhans Yogananda's book and yeah, Giribala, she never ate, yeah, saint who never ate. And okay, there's um I have a question that uh God has considered a male. Right? So could that be the reason for the patriarchy? Would that have led to the rise of patriarchy that the supreme soul is a male?
If you look at God, okay, then you put deeper into the God's leelas.
Hmm.
He actually becomes servant to Radha Rani, his shakti presses her feet. Then it should have made everybody shevalras, right?
So that's no one goes that deep into the spiritual.
No, that is.
That's a shallow thinking.
Right, so that no, that that basically stems from the fact that people are ignorant and maybe some vested interests take over and stuff like that. Uh but actually, if you go into the scriptures, like I said, the mother stature is higher than that of father, they are given more privilege. Scriptures have repeatedly said that. So if somebody reads even a line of those scriptures and they are serious about their spiritual growth, they will never ever say any bad word to women if they truly gone through the scriptures, okay, very clearly scripted.
Because they always say that, you know, he is the creator, it's always a he. So I was just wondering, maybe that could be, you know.
Yeah, so he's called Parampurish, but if you get into it, he's multiplied himself as a shakti part of it. And in divine leela, shakti is given higher position than the shaktiman, he presses her feet and he's completely enslaved. In fact, there is a lela in Bhagavatam where he comes to Gopi. So for Gopis have this pride that, okay, you know, the entire this Brahmandanayak is the dust, right? Also, they developed a bit of a pride. So the Krishna disappeared immediately. And then he disappeared and after a while, then the researching, he again came back in front of them in his four armed form, like that of Vishnu. And Gopi said, what is this you're doing? Okay. And they started making fun of him that you have this in your hand and that in your hand, what do we do with this? And then they brought in Radha Rani, the moment he saw Radha Rani's two heads vanished automatically. So that is the power Radha Rani or the shakti exerts over the shaktiman. If you go deeper into scriptures, people who actually understand it, they will understand shaktis has a higher thing. In fact, Krishna also doesn't know, you know, scriptures say the amount of love, depth of love Radha has for him. And in order to experience that, he sometimes descends the that greater thing, but yes, to your point. If people think God is male and we become superior, then tell them, okay, you just have to wait for another lifetime and then we will talk. Because nobody chooses that, okay, it is accorded to you to make good use of it rather than getting hung up into it because otherwise, right, there's absolutely no control. Anybody can become female for that matter, so. But yeah, I can, I get your question. It it could be result for people who think that males are superior and stuff like that, but this is more born out of ignorance and lack of understanding than anything else, I would say, not read too much into it. All right, I think we're getting close to time today, good discussion today, Maya thing we'll discuss tomorrow. Uh can take quickly couple of.
You know, few chats most predicted or hence first.
Either way, Samji, you are the co-host, so it's your privilege today, whatever.
Seba G, Radha Radhe.
Radha Radha. The the male form that she's talking, uh God is a male, I mean, we keep seeing him. And that is in terms of the form of God, formless God doesn't have these bodily genders or meaning as such. That's and God put us on the earth as equals. It's the societal conditioning that has progressed. These suffocating levels of point, some point.
Stereotypes, yes, very true. It's a societal stuff more than anything else.
Right.
Just like the religious fanaticism, people just make those rules with absolutely no basis, just because.
Yes, stereotypes suffocating and it started with um um the caveman who went for hunting and obviously if you're carrying a child, can't do that. So then it became, okay, this is what you do because you are in a female body, male body and then progress to the dominance. And then now we are improving on that, but um it takes time to really get down to the nitty gritty bones and bone marrow to really not even think that way in terms of not just deeds, emotions and speech, but even in the thoughts and take some time. So it is conditioning. Uh women are more softer and obedient and what else, I feel we see. And traditionally, well, that was um neuroplasticity ingrained. So now I'm not being obtuse here, but that has been my observation and into comparing the two cultures that I have been in. So, thank you.
Great point, yeah. I know a lot of things, lot of factors played to that mindset that we acquire, acquire, it's an acquired mindset more than anything else, great points. Okay, real quick, we can take last two hands and then we can do our prayers together and continue with our discussion on Maya tomorrow.
Arti G, Radha Radhe.
Radha Arti G.
Dr. Arti, everyone. Let's see, I've been, I've been unlucky, was gone just now, uh seven mindset was uh today not to be done, so I thought there'll be other program and I was gone. So what was the core of the discussion?
Oh, you're asking to recap the entire session? For today's discussion, we were discussing about Women's Day and what is the stature of shakti versus shaktiman and shaktis. And is there any inherent advantage women have over men on the path of spirituality? So that is what we were discussing today. Um but you can, you can catch up on the recording which I'll post, so you didn't miss, that was probably the gist of what we discussed today, Arti.
Adma G, Radha Radhe.
And I'd make this very quick, I just wanna like talk about two stories that that I came across. Um Janegi, right, Janegi actually um um somewhere, I don't know the complete story and I'm bringing this for a reason, I Janegi is at the feet of a maid, a lady maid, I think for self-realization. Um you know, to help her um uh so that he can self-realize. So that was one thing. And um the other thing is when Sita was away, every ritual that Ram has done, at least from my childhood stories that I have remember is he always had an idol or of of Sita next to her in as 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 much I understood, it's because the punya that you get from performing those ednas, you cannot get the punyas without the shakti form of the same Lord, right, the shakti form. So it is, it is just the form and why I'm bringing this is that shakti form, if you understand the the concept from a spiritual perspective, that it is a form which is what we are talking about, not the lens of materialistic thing that gives us uh that gives men this condition thing which happens in our mind, which is happening either because of culture or parenting or whatever one, that conditioning will be that shackles that they draw upon themselves would actually um they have, they will get that strength and power to break those shackles of their own mindset, which has been conditioned for so many, so many years and generations. Um and once a man uh realizes and men realize that that the qualities that women have uh maybe we have a innate advantage of how we can connect to spirituality, but if their ultimate goal is also spirituality, they will be willing to be vulnerable. If a man cries, that's not, that is conditioned to think that they are weak. And me as being a mother of two boys, and I say this to my kids, that if you are a man and if you're a boy, crying is not your weakness, crying is actually being that strong man that I want to be, not that you should cry every single time, but expressing that emotions takes a lot of courage, being a man to break those shackles. So I embrace that and I'm very proud of you if you're coming with your emotions and actually breaking those shackles that is conditioned in the culture and the society and you're getting past those emotions and allowing yourself to experience and realize your own self, for me as a mother and the form that God has given me, I'm so very proud of you. That I see that the strongest men will shed some tears for the right emotions and for the right purpose.
Great, right emotions and the right purpose and it takes strength actually to do that for sure. Beautiful point, Adma G. Wonderful. And other aspect, yes, I can talk about that, I think back to the question that Shriti was saying that, you know, patriarchal society, I'll get back to that. Yes, Rahul, I, yeah, I see your hand raised as well.
Radha Radhe.
Radha Radhe.
I think in the recent keynote session, Swamiji also mentioned that the stature of mother is hundred times higher than that of other.
Yep, very true.
And in India, where the river Ganga is called Ganga Maya, Gomata, Dharthimata, that is the glory of India, so.
And in fact, if you look at it, this one, I actually took it from one of Swamiji's lectures also. Pito shat guna mata vandaya puje hum garishetik, that is where brother is shat, shat guna means hundred times more. So mother is hundred times more than father, that's what our scriptures tell us. So that is how it goes. And also if you think about it, if you truly consider yourself as a soul, the gender, the parents, the society, the family, right, the country, the planet, the Brahmand, do we have any control over where we are going to get born? Absolutely not. So what what makes us proud of that? The religion, what makes us proud of that? Did we contribute towards? No, we did not. It happened to us, so that doesn't mean it makes us inferior or superior than anybody else. As at the platform of soul, our sole focus should be to uplift ourselves from where we are, that's about it. We get hung up in these small things, you know, small toys that we start building in our mind. This and that, it's all useless basically, if you look at it from a spiritual standpoint, there's only one agenda of life. If you think of it from God's standpoint, only one agenda, what is that agenda? To do Antakaran Shuddhi and and develop love for him, even in Bible, it says, love God will all thy heart, all thy might and all thy soul. Love is the common denominator, even Sufi saints say the same. As scriptures say the same, that just love God, that's it, so simple. You don't have to do something very complicated, but people think something which is simple has to be inferior, right? It's like something buying from Palika Bazaar, you know, it has simple, it it takes a lot to do that simple thing, right? Swamiji was saying that if somebody tells you, no, you know, for you to realize God, go to a forest, start eating leaves. Don't fear anything, stop eating food, pull your hair. Don't fear anything, stop eating food, pull your hair, you know, ten hair after a few months, few, every few months, don't sleep. And stand on one leg and then after a year you'll rise, will you say, now it makes sense? Right, if somebody tells just love God and you'll realize it seems too good to be true. So we just have to go with the simple thing, it's actually, that's exactly what our scriptures saying, right, the other day Rahul, you were talking about, four things we have to do. Hari Guru Bhajanit Govindaradhe Bhav Nishkam Ananya Banade, that's all, love God. Guru and just be Nishkam, selfless, give, give that mindset and that's it, that's all is needed in this life. Wonderful discussion, we'll continue with that. Um, uh, thank you, Padma ji, for inspiring me to put something for the, uh. Women's Day today, today's discussion would have gone on Maya, but, uh, I think I'm glad we had this discussion and you're able to put together something at the last minute. And tomorrow's discussion is going to be fairly engaging as well, we'll tackle a question that com- commonly keeps, you know, coming up. Why Maya, you know, end of the day we blame Maya for everything, we will get into that topic, we'll tackle it tomorrow. Okay, uh, good.
One thing, yesterday I had, uh.
You had. Chamji, you. Your voice.
Practice makes a man perfect, can you hear me?
Yeah, it was like this Saturday, like it happened, okay, sometimes your voice just.
Are you happy now?
Yes.
Is it okay now?
It's okay, much better.
Yeah, I, it was a code that practice makes a man perfect. And women, they already there.
Yeah, I'm seeing a lot of jokes coming out of that.
You need to be more, more, great, great, grateful to women. Because, because of them only we are, we are, we are today.
Yeah, Swamiji explained that women are the mothers of men, so if men are important, women are super important, much, much more important. That is how it is, right, even the, the first teacher for a child is also his mother. So they, they are accorded a very high stature for a good reason, uh, even in our scriptures for that matter. They need to be revered and in families where they are not revered, the piety cannot sustain itself, very clearly our scriptures are telling us. All right, and, and, I know we had some announcements probably around holy and. I think there's a parenting coming up, so if you have that list, you can quickly do that and then I would encourage you.
Not only have, this tracker, so please feel free to post your feedback on the tracker. And I can ask, uh, with the watch if he is there for the announcements, so.
Radha, Radhe, uh, the, I done, all the, uh, announcements have been posted, so I can do it once again if you want to. The, the announcements are parenting pearls, uh, please to register for it and Holika Dhahan is coming up and there is even the holy festival. So people who are in Dallas, we really, really would like to see you at the temple.
Please do come, it's a good opportunity to meet you in face to face as well and, uh, we have a wonderful holy event coming up. Uh, you can help us in various ways, help spread the word around, if you can make it in person in or around Dallas, one, that would be wonderful. But do help, spread the word around and, uh, and if we come over for events, if you can make it, if you are in Dallas. So we can meet in person as well and it will be really wonderful, uh, you know, to get associated with these events. Anything else, some to money?
Thank you so much, that's a, we could go to closing prayers.
Okay, let's do the closing prayers then. Om Sarve Bhavan Tushukinaha Sarve Santhu.
Yeah, oops.
All right, Radha, Radha, have a wonderful day and a great rest of your evening and look forward to seeing you tomorrow.
The idea, suggestion, if it can do it, like you said, we can admit all at the end of the, of the session. So we can start by doing one person at a time, we can do aside the closing place, we can try it.
Sorry, I missed that part.
Give a chance to person each every time.
Or to do the closing prayers?
Doing it all together because we can't hear properly, we can try and one person a chance every time, if possible that way.
So somebody can raise their hand and they get a chance, so we can do it, we can take turns, that's a great, great idea. Sha, you are awesome, wonderful idea for the day.
Hello, am I audible?
Yes, yes, this is Sunitha ji.
Yes, yes, I have just one question, the parenting session, is it, uh, suitable for the India time, is it online?
Yeah, I think it should be suitable for Indian time.
It is five thirty AM CS, uh, India time, five thirty India time, AM.
Okay, and it's online.
Yes, it's on online.
It's gotta be online.
When will it? It's, it's a four, uh, it is four sessions totally, like two, two sessions per week, so it's totally four, it's starting on March fourteenth.
And, and the link will be shared on the, on the, uh, same G K, uh, your WhatsApp group?
No, for this, there will be a separate WhatsApp group, if you register for it, you will be sent in that. I can post the registration link right away, just give me a minute. When, yeah, I know five thirty is early for some of them, but since it's only four days, so it should be, it should work out, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I've just posted the link, Sunitha ji.
The parenting link, right, that's the one.
Yes, yes, you will have to register for that, yes, it's a paid session, it's a paid session, the payment will be going for the temple, yeah.
Okay, sure, thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, it's early for some and it's, it might be midnight for some, like me, so. All right, Radha, Radha, have a wonderful day, good evening, I'll see you tomorrow, stay.
Thank you everyone, Shamsi, Rahul ji, thank you so much, Radha, Radha. I'll be closing the bridge now.